Good evening, citizens and staff. I'm Mayor Kara Westphal. Here by call for order this council meeting on Monday, June 20th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Counselor Steinberg?
Here.
Counselor Blain?
Here.
Counselor Russo?
Here.
Counselor McCall?
Here.
Please stand and join me at the podium. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Presentation tonight with Jennifer Little, who is on tobacco retail licensing. You've got a five to 10 minute presentation.
Quick little props here for you. Good evening, council members and Mayor Westphal. I'm Jennifer Little. I'm the Director of Plymouth County Public Health.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Want me to start over? I'm Jennifer Little. I'm the Director of Plymouth County Public Health. This is Miranda Hill. She's our Tobacco Prevention Coordinator. As you know, we're here today to talk about tobacco retail licensing. And since many of you are new, I figured I'd give you a little bit of background just to set the stage a little bit. So hopefully, as you all know, tobacco use is a significant public health issue. It's still the leading cause of preventable death in the United States, killing over 480,000 people every year. And in Plymouth County alone, we spend $7.8 million a year on tobacco-related healthcare. And big tobacco continues to prey on our youth. If you aren't aware, vaping has become an epidemic. Ask any school teacher or parent, and they will agree with me on that. The Oregon Teens Survey reported that 1 in 5 of our 8th graders and nearly 1 in 3 of our 11th graders in Plymouth County report having used flavored tobacco products, and 12% just in the past 30 days. This bin right here is just a very small sample of confiscated vape pens from some of our junior high and high schools. This is our tobacco candy jar. Everything in here is a tobacco product. As you can see, it's very colorful. Everything is flavored, so it just goes to show you that big tobacco uses these tactics to make smoking seem safe and fun and mask the flavor. The built environment directly impacts our health and safety. Proximity to tobacco retailers has been linked to increased tobacco use among youth. Studies have shown that youth living in areas with a high density of tobacco retailers are more likely to initiate tobacco use and become regular users. Children and young adults are particularly vulnerable to predatory marketing by big tobacco. And when these products and their advertising is really near schools and childcare facilities, it just reinforces the normalcy of tobacco products. And rural areas like here typically have higher use of tobacco and higher density of tobacco retailers. Year after year, we rank at the bottom of the Robert Wood Johnson County Health Rankings. In 2021, we were 34th out of 35 ranked counties. The past two years, we moved up one step to be 33rd out of 35. But through collaborative community efforts, we're making a lot of progress. 19% of Plymouth County adults use tobacco, but compared to 10 years ago, we are at 23%. So we're slowly making progress, which is great. And luckily, our elected leaders such as yourselves made a commitment to turn the tides and start moving the needle for our whole community in the right direction. So a little bit of background, in 2016, Plymouth Falls was named Oregon's first Blue Zones Demonstration Community. We collectively rolled up our sleeves and got to work on community health improvement. In 2017, both Plymouth County and Plymouth City of Plymouth Falls passed tobacco retail licensing in an effort to hold tobacco retailers accountable and prevent youth from illegally purchasing tobacco at stores. Prior to the ordinance, state inspections resulted in one of every three retailers failing their inspection, so they were selling to youth illegally. Fast forward to five years, and typically, we only see 1 to 2 failures each round of inspections. We do them twice a year. So that's a big improvement. And largely, that's because our ordinance not only holds these retailers accountable, we're able to do a lot of education to these retailers, and it's really starting to show. So really quickly, I know it's going to be kind of hard to see. These are also online, but this is a GIS map of our tobacco retailers in Plymouth County. Yes. And Miranda can explain what you're looking at?
Absolutely. So this is our Plymouth County map. You'll see here that every blue sticky note means that this retailer has failed once, and every pink sticky note means that they have failed at least twice. This is just within about the last two years, maybe even a little bit less, but just to show you guys that our retailers here, they're here, they're near our schools. You'll see our buffer zones within the fourth mile, but they are failing. This is just a visual.
So we continue on our tobacco prevention work. So in 2018, Plymouth Falls passed Smoke-Free City Parks. The county in 2018 was also nationally recognized when it was awarded the prestigious Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize, which is because we are pursuing innovative solutions and bringing partners together with a shared vision of health. In 2020, Plymouth Falls earned its Certified Blue Zones Community status. In 2021, the State of Oregon passed statewide tobacco retail licensing, so any community that didn't already have an existing ordinance then falls under the state. So we did not fall under that because we already had an ordinance. You as leaders are pushing these successes forward, and it's up to you to keep the momentum going. Last month, Plymouth County Commissioners passed a stronger retail license ordinance, which limits proximity of tobacco retailers to childcare facilities, schools, and limits proximity to other retailers. So it's a density limit. So the reason we're here today is to let you know what this means for you and what your options are. You've got, I think, printed packets with information, and one of them has basically three options that you can pursue. So the resolution passed back in 2017 adopted the county ordinance, which granted us at Public Health to run the program, which includes the education, the inspections, and enforcement, so issuing fines when people fail. So your resolution simply said, "We're adopting what the county has." So that's basically how it reads. And so as I understand, and I've been talking with city council here, that you would need to decide if you want to re-adopt the resolution, taking on the county ordinance with the new limitations on proximity, rescind it and pass your own tobacco retail license ordinance, keeping it the same, or if you don't do that, you'll fall under state tobacco retail license law. So then Oregon Health Authority would come down, do the inspections. They would, folks here, would have to purchase a license through the Department of Revenue. Just as a comparison, our license fee is $275. The state's is $953. The state also just has a different fee and penalty schedule than what we have here. From a public health perspective, it would provide consistency to have both ordinances be the same, and also could prevent the city from now having a much higher density of tobacco retailers because suddenly, there's no limits here. There are limits in the county. I've been in communication with Michael and with CASIDA, and I do understand that there are several concerns around land use and new developments. So I'm happy to continue those conversations and come up with an agreeable solution that we can all be really happy about while we're still protecting our community and our youth from tobacco use. So that's all I have for you. If you have questions, happy to answer, or happy to just take questions and come back to a work session or another presentation.
Can you send us that map with the buffer zones outlined on it? I know I've looked at it before, but I'd love to just spend some time with it because of those concerns that have been raised by CASIDA, just to see how much that's impacting those new potential businesses.
Absolutely. Thank you. And it's online, yes? Live? Okay. Yes, we'll email it. Should we direct that to Nicole?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Any video? Question?
Does that show all license holders, or is that just the ones that were in violation?
It's all of them.
That shows everything. And that buffer is from the 1,000 feet from property line?
So this is just showing the childcare, the schools within 1/4 mile?
Okay.
Have there been other communities that have done this outside of here? And do you have any data that shows any sort of economical impact that it's made on those businesses?
So Benton, Clagamas, and Lane County all have this ordinance. We actually took a lot of their language for the counties. I'm not aware of any economic impact, and it honestly might be too early to tell, but from, as I understand, everybody's been grandfathered in. So, and that's the same with the county. So we, anybody who currently has a license keeps their license. It's only on new people. In addition, say for example, someone fails all their inspections and we revoke their license, they can't get another one. And if they sell the business or they try to transfer their license, they can't do that if they're in the proximity of a school, a childcare facility, or another retailer. So for example, the Portland Street Market changed owners. They had to buy a new tobacco retail license. Had there been this ordinance in place, the new retailer would not have been able to get a tobacco retail license because they're so close to Roosevelt School. They could still operate the business, they just can't sell tobacco.
Go ahead.
Is that also true, Jennifer? If the business is passing down from family member to family member, how does the grandfathering work in a case like that?
So if it's changing hands, they would have to get a new license. Because basically, like, when you're filling out the license, it's to the person and the business, so if ownership of the business changes, they get all new licenses. And that's the same with restaurants, pools, hotels. Yeah.
Yeah. I support the work you're doing. Thank you. I have two middle schoolers, so I understand what an issue this has become. I'm also looking forward to the next phase of competition because there are business owners that just land with certain understandings, and so trying to find something that's agreeable to the economy and also to the public health strategy and the work you're trying to do. It's not an easy issue.
Yeah, absolutely. And just so you're aware, we had a commissioner meeting at the admin today because we are trying to amend the ordinance we just passed just to bring in some clarifying information on the definition of a tobacco retailer, to kind of figure out what's the threshold for when someone can actually apply for a license. Because with these new developers, we just had some questions that had never come up before.
Because it might just be one thing, it might just be one thing they do that isn't how the public would normally think of a tobacco retailer.
Correct. Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. I see you. Prior to public comment, we've got some statements from the staff. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Counselor. So I read this last week, but I thought it'd be opportune to read it again on the light of surface cases. So, per your view, please, I wanted to take a moment and sit with relevant questions and concerns that I suspect you will hear tonight and have heard over the past couple of weeks related to proposed intersection modifications in the downtown. The city receives an all-roads transportation safety or arcs grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation to look at installing reflectorized backplates on the traffic signals and install pedestrian countdown timers on pedestrian signals in the downtown core. The city expressed an interest in looking at the signature where necessary and look at installing curb extensions at these intersections to help with pedestrian safety. The curb extension, the curb extension that should shorten the distance across the intersection and make pedestrian easier to see by the motorists. Between the years of 2015 and 2019, there were 116 reported crashes at these signalized intersections, several being rollovers. This is an area where the designated speed is 20 miles per hour. The city hired a traffic engineering firm using a small amount of the grant dollars from the state to conduct a warrant analysis on each of these intersections. These analyses were completed using methodology from the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MBTCD. The MBTCD identifies nine warrants to justify the need for a signal. None of these intersections are being ruled. I can't answer what criteria was for the installation, but Plymouth and Main were primary corridors until 1997 was built. Signal of Porton Main was only recently installed. Additional analysis showed all intersections except three were eligible for always stop control, and the other three would be two-way stop control. To simulate this, always flashing red is an always stop, and a flashing yellow simulates the two-way stop control or through movement. From the Oregon Driver's Manual, a flashing red is treated the same as a stop sign. A flashing yellow signal means slow down and proceed with caution. Also, from the Driver's Manual, intersections with stop signs in all four directions, it is common courtesy to allow the driver who stops first to go first, and when in doubt, yield to the driver on your right. However, never assume the driver will yield the right way to you. The plan was to monitor this test for three months and then decide whether to make it permanent or not. If we proceed, city staff would remove the existing signals and replace with stop signs where appropriate. Curb extensions would be contracted out for construction and built until the grant dollars are depleted. The city issued two press releases starting a month in advance and tried to help repair motors for this change. Staff also presented some concepts to the Downtown Business Association a year ago and received positive feedback. So that's what we are right now. If you have any questions prior to that, I'm happy to try to answer them.
We have Water Manager Robbie West.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I read a statement here on something that you may hear about tonight or not, but something that was brought to our attention and something we might want to go about. So the city of Plymouth Falls Water Division staff became aware of water surfacing in the Merriman neighborhood in the beginning of May 2023. City staff working in the area noticed the water on Merriman Drive, Wantland Avenue, and Applewood Street. Extensive leak detection surveying, as well as groundlight listening, was completed in the area to determine the water was not related to the city water system. Shortly after the initial leak survey, Water Division staff was notified by area homeowners of their concern with a possible leak in the area. Although staff were certain the issue was not the city's, staff followed up with additional leak surveys when calls came in. Each time staff performed a survey, the results were the same. No evidence can be found of a leak in our system. In the beginning of June 2023, city staff was contacted by both Plymouth Derogation District and Bureau of Reclamation with concerns of a possible leak in the same area. City staff had previously worked with KID on the same issue last year, as water surfacing is in the same locations as the previous summer. In 2022, it was determined to be a KID issue when they completed excavation and repair work on the canal to resolve that issue. This year, Bureau of Reclamation has taken a more active role in the investigation of surfacing water. They have completed water testing to try and determine the source of the water. With the leak investigation still in progress, or still in process, the Water Division has again completed leak surveys on Wednesday, the 14th of June. Water Division expanded the area to include a wider search, as well as pot boiling the water on Reclamation Avenue that appeared as a possible anomaly in our survey. The location was pot boiled today, June 20th, 2023. Staff discovered no issues at that site. After this last survey, staff has determined that the surfacing water issue is still not a city water issue. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, but if you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them.
Questions coming? Thank you very much for that information. We'll now do public comment. Public comment guidelines. Public comment is a time for citizens to present information to the city, and if based on what is presented, additional information is needed and/or an answer warranted by the city. Citizens will be contacted by the appropriate city staff, and/or future agenda item will be scheduled for further discussion. Public comment is not a time set for questions and answers. If councilors have questions, they will be presented to staff or the speaker at another time. And for those that have filled out paperwork, we have Larry Redd.
My name's Larry Redd. I live at 2929 Long Lake Road, and I'm here to address the current state of the traffic lights on Main and Plymouth Avenue. That I've almost been hit three times, and so I'm avoiding Plymouth and Main as much as I can. I'm here to ask that you change the traffic lights back to the way they were and synchronize for the following reasons. I'm not sure that everyone knows what a blinking red light means, that apparently everybody doesn't because they tend to run the light. It's very confusing for people that live here to go down Plymouth and Main Street, let alone for people that are from out of town. That I have a business here, and I advise all my sales and delivery drivers to avoid Main and Plymouth Avenue if at all possible. That the first traffic lights were put up in 1868, so we have effectively taken Plymouth Falls back 155 years in history. The other thing that I want to impress is the fuel savings with synchronized lights and the improved air quality that we all get from synchronized lights. The stop-and-go traffic uses more fuel, and if we're going to be concerned about our air quality, I think we should think about that. That it costs everyone more fuel now. I don't know what the, I don't know what the history is. I don't know why that we're doing this study, but if the idea was to bring more traffic to downtown, I think we failed in what we're trying to do. Because I believe there are a lot of people that are avoiding the downtown area at this time.
Thank you.
We'd like to submit your statement to the record so it can be made part of the
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel and Mike Moore.
Hello. We are Mike and Rachel Moore, and our current address is 984 Aurora Boulevard. Good evening, council members and mayor. My wife and I own commercial property at 2883 South 6th Street, 621 through 625 Main Street, and I've owned each of these properties for over 20 years. For your reference, these are the locations of two of the Subway Sandwich franchises in Plymouth Falls. Over the past several years, we have noticed what we believe is a surge in unhoused individuals congregating and camping nearby our properties. We have experienced people sleeping in our garbage dumpster and setting up campsites in the alleyway near our Main Street property. Additionally, we have observed a good number of motorhomes, travel trailers, and automobiles parking on Pershing Way behind and near our South 6th property and using these vehicles to camp overnight, in some cases for long periods of time. As you know, the unhoused population has become a concern in our area and other parts of Oregon and throughout our country. We have notified the city's Code Enforcement Division of our observations many times, but the situation continues to occur. We acknowledge that this situation is very challenging, and suitable solutions are difficult to find. We believe the circumstances that I have described are detrimental to the general business environment in our community and also lead to unsanitary living situations as the locations provide for no public restroom facilities and also possibly lead to unsafe living conditions. We have noticed increased vandalism to our property when camping increases near our property. We understand that council has recently adopted ordinance number 23-02, which attempts to address the issue of camping and homelessness. We also understand council has made the unhoused situation a priority during the next year. We appreciate this action, but feel that much more needs to be done. Other communities in Oregon are scheduling citizen forums that discuss and endeavor to find solutions to this issue. Some communities are finding and raising resources to establish modest housing solution for those who cannot provide a permanent residence for themselves. Communities also are discovering funding sources to assist with mental health and substance abuse issues of unhoused individuals. We sincerely hope that we, and many others, can partner with the city of Plymouth Falls to find compassionate ways to establish suitable residence for those who have no permanent housing, and by doing this, improve our local business environment. Thank you. Thanks very much. But thanks to Abby for meeting with us and city manager.
Good afternoon. Madeline Hutchinson, 1111 Merriman Drive, Plymouth Falls, Oregon. I'm here, I submitted a vision, a vision and mission statement, and I just want to make sure everybody hears me because I'm nervous and I don't, I'm really not a public speaker, okay? I submitted some documents to you, to you guys. The first one was the vision and mission of the city, city of Plymouth Falls. The second one was an email that was sent from the Administration Assistant Record Specialist, May 30th, 2023. And the second one will be this letter that I wrote. And it's not a long letter, so I'm going to take a breath.
You're doing good.
Okay. Dear Counsel, I'm Madeline Hutchinson, called the city of Plymouth Falls Utilities to come and check to see if I had any leaks from my home at 1111 Merriman Drive. The city had ruled that there was no, not a leak from my house. On Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, I came home, the water meter was left open and full of water. I would like to know, and I'm sure my neighborhood would like to know, what kind of inspection, testing, samplings, monitoring, collections were done to rule out the city's responsibility of us citizens? There have been many calls to the city of Plymouth Falls Utilities last year, 2022, to present, 2023. I'm not sure if my neighbors have been given any formal written notices of what actions was completed from our city of Plymouth Falls to ensure that the water that is surrounding our home and causing damages to our property was properly handled. The zoning of our area had to be passed by the city and county in order to build residential homes. We are tax-paying citizens and share the same visions and mission of the city of Plymouth Falls. I'm here because I have not received any formal notification in any capacity except a phone call that I, a citizen, didn't meet the requirements of the city council's agenda in an email that didn't help with the situation of the city's responsibility. In closing, for now, I, we, would like you all, council members. It's fine.
It's okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to stop there.
Yeah, that's fine.
But we've got your letter.
Yes.
And thank you so much. Appreciate that.
And then also, I have copies for anybody else that would like.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any?
I'll forward it.
Yeah. Anybody else?
No.
There you go. Thank you. So at this point, seeing that I do not have any more for public comment, we will close Consent Agenda 5.1, the approval of the Consent Agenda Meeting Agenda and current meeting, February 15th, March 3, and January 5, 2023. May 15th, 2023, and June 25th, 2023, provided under separate cover. And items 5.2 through 5.7. 5.3 is salary authorization for city managers, city attorney, and municipal court judge. 5.3 is the concurrence on a mayoral appointment of the personal trainer Travis Keiner and Katrina Ayers to the marijuana advisory committee. 5.4, concurrence on a mayoral appointment of Joseph Houdun to the Plymouth Intercommunity Hospital Authority Board. Hospital Authority Board. 5.5 is the authorization purchase of water slide from natural structures in the amount not to exceed 88,202 for the Elariki Pool. 5.6, authorization to purchase one vehicle, 2023, fourth floor, LT from Butler Ford, Ashland, in the amount not to exceed 25,480 and 86 cents. And 5.7, May 2023 project update on the waste water treatment plant upgrade.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 6, general public hearing, 6.1, liquor license recommendation for Common Block Brewing Company located at 1320 Main Street, Development Service Director.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have a public hearing and positive recommendations to the OLCC for Common Block Brewing Company, which is moving into the former primory building at 1320 Main Street. The hours they will be operating are 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday. It'll be a full beer, wine, and liquor license, age restricted in the bar area only, and there have been no responses to the public notices. We ask that we hold a public hearing and make a recommendation.
And I will open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item can do so at this time. And seeing and hearing nobody, we will close that.
I'll move to recommend the allowance of full on-premises alcohol sales to the OLCC for Common Block Brewing Company located at 1320 Main Street. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6.2, liquor license recommendation for Jalapenos Taco Shop located at 2560 Campus Drive, Development Service Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, a second public hearing, recommendation to OLCC. Jalapenos Taco Shop has two facilities in town already, they're going to be moving into the former Taco Time out by the university at, what's the address?
2560 Campus Drive.
2560 Campus Drive, I've got it written here somewhere. It's not age restricted, their hours will be 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. Again, no responses to the public notices, our recommendations, a public hearing and approval.
Very good. I need, I will open the public hearing, anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item can do so now. And seeing and hearing nobody, we will close that.
I would move to recommend the allowance of limited on-premises alcohol sales to the OLCC for Jalapenos Taco Shop located at 2560 Campus Drive.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. 6.3, resolution adopting the 2023-2025 biennial budget for the City of Clamath Falls, Oregon, making appropriations and levying taxes. Finance Director Jessica Lindsay.
Good evening, Mayor and councils, I have these city budget adoption. The total budget for the 23-25 biennial is 182,721,275 dollars. Total appropriations, which are essentially the expenditures that the departments can spend, is 157,857,200. Our taxes will be at our permanent rate of 5.4423 for 1,000 for both fiscal years. And for our general obligation bond, it'll be 245,000 for the 24 fiscal year and 250,000 for the 25 fiscal year.
I'll move to introduce the resolution and read by title only. After the, right after the public hearing.
I will open for a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item can do so now. Seeing and hearing nobody, we will continue.
I'll move to introduce the resolution and read by title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
6.3, a resolution adopting the 2023 through 2025 biennial budget for the City of Clamath Falls, Oregon, making appropriations and levying taxes.
Move to approve the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Stenber?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller-Wentz?
Yes.
6.4, the resolution for the receipt of 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 state revenue sharing funds.
The state requires us to pass a resolution to receive their state revenue sharing funds. These are taxes they collect from like liquor taxes, cigarette taxes, and share a portion with cities that pass these resolutions. We also have to state how we're going to use them, and we are going to be using them for general government purposes.
Hey, I'd like to open up a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item, make do so now. And seeing and hearing nobody, we will close that.
I'll move to introduce the resolution and read by title only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
6.4, a resolution for the receipt of 2023-2024 and 2024-2025 state revenue sharing funds.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Counselor Stenber?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller-Wentz?
Yes.
6.5, adjourned council meeting, and since council to act as in the capacity of the Urban Renewal Agency, a resolution adopting the 2023-2025 biennial budget with Clamath Falls Urban Renewal Agency making appropriations and declaring tax increments.
I'll move to adjourn the city council meeting, so the city council can act in capacity of the Urban Renewal Agency.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Finance Director Jessica Lindsay.
I bring before you the resolution adopt the biennial budget for the Urban Renewal Agency and declaring tax increment. And the total budget for the Urban Renewal Agency is 2,185,625, with total appropriations being 1,995,850. We are declaring 100% of the division of taxes for all three urban renewal districts.
I'd like to open up a public hearing, anybody wishing to speak on this agenda item, make do so now.
I'll move to introduce the resolution and read by title only.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
A resolution adopting the 2023-2025 biennial budget for the Clamath Falls Urban Renewal Agency, making appropriations and declaring tax increment.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Stenber?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller-Wentz?
Yes.
Number 7, 7.1, legislative actions, first item, city council acting in capacity of the Urban Renewal Agency. This item is to be folded, rescheduled for July 17th, 2023. City Council acting in the capacity of urban renewal agencies, new extension exposition and development agreement, DDA, for the, for the main and esplanade property with the confidence of Clamath Falls.
Yeah, noted, Mayor. Yeah, I've asked to pull this item from the agenda, again anticipating bringing this back at the July 17th meeting.
No motion.
Send no motion.
So do we need an motion to adjourn from Urban Renewal and we can be, so moved?
All in favor, say aye.
Do we need a second?
Need a second, Al. Yeah, go ahead.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
7.2, authorization of consultant service contract with Pond and Company for design and construction administration services for the ANG maintenance ramp repair project. Council and Mayor, reoccurring subject here, the Air National Guard Ramp Repair Project. If you remember, we held a work session on this item back in April, and on May 15th, we were presenting to council, which approved essentially the authorization to execute a facilities sustainment repair modernization cooperative agreement with the Guard. It was essentially a $24 million agreement between the city and the Guard to help us facilitate the repair of this ramp project. So once our agreement was in the works, we then started the second phase, which was to find an engineer that would help with the design and the contracted administration of that project. We went through a request for statements of qualifications, we had three firms submit qualifications, and a review panel that consisted of airport, city, and Air National Guard personnel reviewed the statements of qualifications that were submitted and recommended that Pond and Company be selected as the firm moving forward. Should be noted that Pond was the design engineer for the Phase 1 of that project, the National Guard. Did not have any issues with the work that Pond had been doing and their natural ability to kind of already be familiar with the project definitely gave them an advantage. From that selection, we have gone into some discussions with Pond and Company as to a contract scope of work with the Air National Guard that would be for the design and the construction administration services. The Guard, as they are the primary funding that we are getting for this project and then passing it along to Pond, has some rules and regulations about what money that Pond can charge, you know, different rates and fees. So there's actually quite a bit spelled out in terms of maximum fees that they can utilize in this project. And the Air National Guard has been working with us jointly to make sure that what Pond and Company has suggested as their scope and fee for this contract is something that is supported and approved by the regulations that the Air National Guard is familiar with. So before you tonight, we have a contract with Pond and Company in the amount of 641,081 dollars for the Design and Construction Administration Services for the Air National Guard Maintenance Repair Project. It should be noted that we have their contracted contingent on the full execution of the FSR MCA, which council approved on May 15th. That agreement is working its way slowly through the Air National Guard's chain of command and is sitting on the general's desk waiting signature, but one reason or another, I have not received word yet that it has been signed, so we are making the Pond and Company contract contingent on that agreement being fully executed. The other thing we're doing with the Pond contract is breaking out the design from the Construction Administration Services and making those two phases both contingent on the execution of an FSR MCA that would cover those costs and giving them their own separate notice to proceed. And we're doing that because, full disclosure, the Air National Guard, on the FSR MCA that we recently just put through and approved with city council, they may be coming back to us with modifications to that agreement to make it design only, as opposed to what it is right now, which is design and construction and administration. So we are making sure that we have all the pieces in place on our end, so that we do not put ourselves into a contract that hasn't been fully funded yet by the Air National Guard. We are fully expecting all materials and supplies and services that we're going to be doing associated with this project to be fully funded. We just want to put that caveat in place to make sure that the city is fully protected. Any questions?
No, very good, thank you for doing that.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Pond and Company in the amount of 641,081 dollars for Design and Construction Administration Services for the ANG Maintenance Ramp Repair Project, contingent on the execution of the Facility Sustainment Repair Modernization Cooperative Agreement with the National Guard Bureau. Really, that is a long, long name.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. 7.3, authorization for city insurance coverage for fiscal year 2023, 2024, from various insurance carriers as proposed by the city's insurance agent of record, Great Basin Insurance. Finance Director Jessica Lindsay.
Good evening, again, I have the insurance coverage for next fiscal year before you. Overall, for the property liability and auto insurance, we increased 8.82%. And the biggest increase was for property and auto physical damage at 26%. This was due just to increasing costs of replacement, if something happened to any of our buildings, our automobiles. Our workers' comp insurance increased 20%, due to some, due to some large claims. Luckily, Deneen and Great Basin did a great job of fighting for us, they were actually going to increase our tier, which would have been an even more significant increase, but they were able to structure some programs and stuff with the city to try to prevent some of those claims in the future that helped to keep our costs down. You have any questions?
I'll move to authorize insurance coverage as proposed by agent of record, Great Basin Insurance for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
7.4, a resolution extending City of Clamath Falls workers' compensation coverage to certain public safety volunteers from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. And Jessica Lindsay.
In our police department, we have various different volunteers that do a lot of different duties, and put in a lot of hours to help us on a volunteer basis. We have, usually have two firefighter paramedics that work with our SWAT team, and then we have reserve police officers, and we have VIPs, volunteers in policing that do various duties. This provides them workers' comp coverage as they're doing their volunteer work.
I'd move to introduce the resolution and read by title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
A resolution extending the City of Clamath Falls workers' compensation coverage to certain public safety volunteers from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Stenber?
Yes.
Counselor Blaine?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor McCollum?
Yes.
Counselor Mueller-Wentz?
Yes.
7.5, a resolution establishing an inter-fund capital loan from the city's escrow reserve fund to the Lakefront Urban Renewal District for developmental cost. Jessica Lindsay.
For Lakefront Urban Renewal District, we spent a little over 3.8 million. We'd taken out previously a 700,000 in a line of credit and just recently an inter-fund loan for 900,000 to pay back the developer for our infrastructure out there. We still owe a little over 2.2 million dollars with the increased building in that area. Our tax increment has increased significantly, and we can now take out a loan and pay back the remaining amount owed on that, which is the 2.2. We recommend the 8.25, which is the current prime rate, and that would give us a payment at 338,893 cents. This is less than actually the tax increment is bringing in, but that leaves us room if we want to look at other activities within that district to be able to do during this time, so it doesn't hold us up and wait till the loan is paid off. We also recommend a 10-year loan.
Move to introduce the resolution and read by title only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
A resolution establishing an inter-fund capital loan from the city's escrow reserve fund. fund to Lakefront Urban Renewal District for development costs.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Blaine?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor McCone?
Yes.
Councilor Mueller-Witt?
Yes.
7.6, a resolution establishing an interfund capital loan from the city's escrow reserve fund to the Town Center Urban Renewal Fund. Jessica Lindsay.
My show tonight. So for our Town Center Urban Renewal, we have 628,000 left tomorrow to meet our maximum embeddedness of the plan. 603 of that is part of Project Milestone Three. That's part of our development agreement. That's to do something with the old Sherm site. So far, there's, the developers are, haven't heard exactly what they're going to be doing, but we do have that development agreement in place, and we have 25,000 that would go for program administrative costs per the plan. So right now, we've paid, as of June 30, we'll pay off all the debt. So in order to get the tax increment for next year, we need to have more debt to be able to pay that. So the best option staff could see would be to take out that 628,000 in the loan and start paying that back, and then we'd have the funds available when the developer did that, finish that project milestone.
Questions, comments?
I'll move to introduce the resolution and read by title only. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the resolution by title.
A resolution establishing an interfund capital loan from the city's escrow reserve fund to the Town Center Urban Renewal Fund.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Blaine?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor McCone?
Yes.
Yes.
7.7, a special ordinance renaming a portion of Brett Way to Wings Way, second and final reading. And Development Service Director. Any more questions?
Happy to answer any questions. This is, this is the deal that I can't believe how long it takes to change the name of a minor part of a street.
Very good.
I'll move to pass the ordinance for second and final reading. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the ordinance by title only.
A special ordinance renaming a portion of Brett Way to Wings Way.
Move to adopt the ordinance. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Blaine?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor McCone?
Yes.
Councilor Mueller-Witt?
Yes.
Very good. 7.8, a special ordinance annexing a 1.37 acre property identified as parcel two of land partition 19-12, and assigning a general commercial zoning designation, second and final reading.
I'll move to pass the ordinance for second and final reading by title only. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, please read the ordinance by title only.
A special ordinance annexing a 1.37 acre property identified as parcel two of land partition 19-12, and assigning a general commercial zoning designation.
Move to adopt the ordinance. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Steinberg?
Yes.
Councilor Blaine?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor McCone?
Yes.
Councilor Mueller-Witt?
Yes.
Very good. Under other matters, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I just have one item under other matters to discuss. I had a request last week from Ross Ragland Theater. We have a five-year agreement that we had entered into with him that allows the city council to waive city code in regards to public drinking within the right of way. This five-year agreement was set to expire this next month in July. Unfortunately, we weren't going to meet prior to this event happening in July, so, and we didn't receive it in time to put it on the agenda. That's why I'm bringing the agreement before you tonight. Staff has looked at the agreement. We're fine with the conditions of approval that are a part of it, looking for a motion to approve an extended five-year agreement with Ross Ragland Theater.
If I could interject one real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I believe that you all probably have copies of the special agreement. The, the old agreement was for an event in May and then another in July. They actually are switching that, so they're going to have one in July and one in August. And I note that the language for the use is still the old language, but I wanted to make sure it's very clear that even though the old language is in here, we would draft a new one to make sure that it's clear, that it's the July and August events. Thank you.
Very good.
I would move to the agreement, July and August events.
Back to you. Sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. See adjournment.
I believe, I hear.
If I could have one more.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
City Council.
Thank you. Was kind enough to come in here and give a presentation about the tobacco, and that was a follow-up to the questions I had had before. Oh, before I, before I go any further, I, I think we should recognize Jessica, because I don't know anyone who's ever had seven items in anything. So I think she deserves her credit for coming up here on so many things. But back to the tobacco. Based upon the information she shared, I'm hoping that council's okay with me reaching out. I would like to reach out to her regarding specifically the buffers, specifically how those work for the grandfathering. I think we'd be much safer to propose a land use style, non-conforming use language versus sticking with the retailers, but I want to explore that with her if you're in agreement. And then likewise, maybe even phasing in the buffers over a period of time. I do recognize the importance of making sure that our ordinances match the county's ordinances, because otherwise, something of this nature, we really have some, the, the rules butting up against one another. But based upon the nods I saw, I'll try to explore some alternates, so it's not all at once, but rather phased in over time. And this will, I hope, give all of our retailers time to get used to it, but also give those who are looking to develop here opportunities to maybe make plans for in the future, if people are comfortable with that.
I have a question about the phasing. What would your time period be for phasing things in, and kind of how would you approach it?
And I'm not sure about that, because the idea came to me as I was sitting there listening to her. But I would think over a period of years, not months, but years to, to really make it worthwhile, but probably no more than five, because I think if it's longer than that, it loses its effectiveness, but if it's less than that, it, it's hard for the planning. So that, that would be kind of a target I would look at, but certainly a lot depends upon the cooperation of Jennifer and her team, because essentially, we would be asking them to enforce differently within the city limits. And I understand, and I recognize that that is a challenge for enforcement agencies. It, it does make it tough. And so if she's willing to work with us, or if they're willing to work with us in that capacity, I think it could be very beneficial in the long run. But I do recognize that it's a very big ask that I'll be presenting to her.
I guess my concern is just that I am supportive of it, and I do understand the concerns for the economic impact and the developers that are potentially coming or have agreed to come, but at the same time, it's not all retail, like, most of the proposed businesses or developments, their sole income, or their sole source of income isn't tobacco. So I'm just curious, you know, what kind of impact would it truly have? But yeah, looking into it. But five years feels really extensive for phasing it in, to be perfectly honest.
Okay.
Especially with the prevalence of vape usage.
And thank you for that feedback. I mean, just to find out if there's any zones, if, if five sounds too long, we can look around for some other solution. And you had asked a question earlier about the development. As far as the development information, I don't have any other information besides what was shared with us with Casita. I don't have numbers from any other communities either, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a comment. I'm not comfortable with the buffers right now, and I'd like to just dive in in looking at other alternatives like you discussed, just to feel it out more, because it is complicated.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. I, I will be in touch with Jennifer, I'll be in touch with all of you, and hopefully throw some different options out there, so that the next time we put this onto the agenda, well, we actually would put it onto the agenda and be able to move forward with a, hopefully a plan. Thank you very much.
Okay. 9.1, adjournment into executive session under O R S, 3.6602B, where to go to.
Move to adjourn the meeting into executive session.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?